Hello, everybody. We're gonna start today's meeting, tonight's meeting. Obviously, I'm not, this is not my familiar seat. So everyone bear with me as I figure this out. We have to take attendance. So Julie?
Joe?
Here.
John?
Here.
Greg? Not here. Stephanie?
Here.
Ange?
Here.
Ange?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Okay.
Sorry.
Alex? Justin? Jen? Jane? Julie's here. Pete? And Mary? So obviously, I'm in tonight for Greg, who is not able to be here. So we're gonna move on now to public comments. Is there anybody that would like to speak? Zoom? We're here. Anyone? Anyone? You can send a chat messenger or send a message in chat, rather, if you would like to speak. If not, we are going to move on. Okay, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. My understanding, I say that if anyone who wants to take the minutes off the consent agenda, is there any? John?
Madam Vice Chairman, I don't take them off. I object to item J. The executive changed the public session minutes for the October 24th BOE. As it, number one, does not fully and accurately reflect what occurred. Number two implies that I claim to represent the board, which I did not. And three erroneously concludes that my letter to the editor and voices contain inaccurate information.
Well. Should I, should we hold off then? And then just, because I think that that would be something that we should discuss with Greg first. So should we just take it off?
Yes.
Completely? The minutes? So, John, maybe we should just take the minutes completely off? And then we can discuss it at the next meeting with Greg? Because that's not something that I feel comfortable. Yeah, so I think that that, we can just kind of put that on for next time. And then we can have a better discussion on that. So, okay. So we will not adopt the minutes as of now. Updates on COVID-19, Lori?
So I shared with all of you the most recent, in my Sunday highlights, I believe it was the most recent report by Houston Tonic Valley Health Department, which clearly shows we are low to zero in cases. Now that only addressed Washington at the time in the last two weeks. But it also aligns with Ally's most recent collection, Ally O'Hara. Her most recent collection of data from the schools, which are, as I mentioned, reported to the state. And that also shows the very low to zero trend across all of our schools. All schools are zero for the time period for the last two weeks, except for Booth with one staff member and S V S with two students. The next reporting for this would be this coming Wednesday. But again, we don't anticipate any major changes in COVID cases. So at some point, I'm thinking COVID reporting might be better served on the superintendent's report rather than a separate agenda item. But that could be determined certainly by the next superintendent and how things might play out in the future.
That's a good question.
Sure.
This is the RSC.
Cases on RSC.
I don't have that information. It is typically. I will, I will talk to our school nurses and the director of health to see what our area looks like in that. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
About the National Convention from Tyler.
And his students, which we're very excited to see. We're so glad you all came tonight. And styling too with those jackets. I love it.
So yeah, good evening, everybody. As Jen said, we're here to just give you the update on the National Convention trip that we attended at the end of October. I'd like to quickly recognize Megan Berry as well. She was very integral in planning the trip for the kids. Did all the legwork for this trip. Could not have done it without her. And this obviously is about the kids. And they put together a presentation for you guys, just on their experiences, that they're gonna go over with you guys very quickly here. So, who was it first? Give it your all.
You can come up to speak at the point where he's talking.
This is just a schedule of roughly the major events we did throughout the days. Yeah. Including our arrival and departure.
So my experience at the National FFA Convention was really fun. I really enjoyed it. I learned how influential the FFA is because I knew it was large, but just seeing it in person really like made it stand out and how big it really is. I saw a lot of sponsors that I had no clue were sponsors, like Domino's, which was surprising to me. Yeah, lots of kids from all over the US, from like Alaska to the Virgin Islands, which I thought was very cool. Yeah, I thought it was really fun.
I think this was a really good experience for all of us to get closer and learn how to work as a team. And I was lucky enough to have gone last year and just seeing the major difference between how many people were there this year compared to last year. It was huge, the difference of like 15,000 people. So, yeah.
So just a little bigger than Chapag?
Just a little.
My experience through the National FFA Convention, I thought it was really great. And I, it really showed me how big the FFA community really is. There were, I believe, 65,000 blue jackets all in one room at one point. And we had a lot of fun just together as a team at the rodeo, the agri park, and opening ceremonies in the zoo. So during the trip, well, I had a lot of fun. And I did get to get a lot closer with the officer team and all of them. I think we really bonded. And it was better than normal because we all had spent a week together. And I also got the opportunity to talk to other people from other chapters and about how their chapters are run. So like, for example, I was talking to people in California about their chapter. And they were talking about how they didn't have to mandate like chapter meetings because they get enough involvement. So I think as an officer team, we should aspire to have that sort of like interest within our own chapter.
So at National Convention, I definitely feel and agree with Mina about how we just truly bonded as a team to create our chapter. Just learning about other chapters to be able to benefit our own. As a small school and a fresh FFA chapter, it was amazing to see the different schools, just everybody coming together. And it was just a lot of fun.
So my experience at National Convention was really great. It showed me how there's so many influential, sorry, influential people who were former FFA members and how they help our communities now in the US. And it also helped me bond with my officers. And it helped me grow new bonds with different schools and to help me gain, get advice from people.
Hi, so I'm Jayla. And I had a really fun time this year. Like I went last year, but this year was even more amazing because I knew already what to expect. But it was different because it wasn't like COVID. There were no COVID restrictions. So here's me riding a bull. It was, it was scary. It was scary, but I really liked it. And also, I bonded a lot with my team this year. I, I've had a couple other officer teams in the past, but this year I really felt like I really got close to this officer team. I feel like now we're friends. Before, we weren't really friends. We were kind of like scared to talk to each other. But now we're, now we're a team, you know? And some fried pickles are right there from Cracker Barrel. Love them. Love them. So yeah, it was all about having an open mind and really enjoying the trip as a team. Thank you.
National Convention was a really eye-opening experience this year. It was my first convention. And between our arrival in Ohio, which got crazy and the rodeo and everything, I think it was a good experience. And we all bonded a lot as friends. So, yeah, I wouldn't trade it for anything. So, thank you.
My experience at National Convention was amazing. I met new friends from all over the country, from Hawaii to Maine, from, and from Alaska to the Virgin Islands. I met a lot of fun people. It was a great experience to bond with my fellow officers and go to new places because I love to travel. So, yeah.
So we really just wanted to take a moment and thank you all for supporting the opportunity for these students to go on this trip. Again, this is our 2022, 2023 FFA Officer Team. So they were given the opportunity to go and to bond as a team at National Convention. We did see almost every state. We have pictures of jackets from almost every state. Dan's jacket actually made it into a video from Texas. So it's a really cool opportunity to meet people from across the country, to see FFA on a local, national, global scale, and a chance to kind of explore opportunities within colleges, careers, all sorts of different formats, and to have fun as a team. So we really do appreciate your support. And we'd be happy to help answer any questions if y'all have any questions about our trip.
Yes.
I'd like to hear a little bit more about the rodeo.
Did I talk about the rodeo?
Okay. So the rodeo, I think it was the second class maybe when we took, we took from our hotel to the shuttle. To it, to it, with all, you know, other people from different states. And. So we started, it was a lot of our first time going to the rodeo, Jayla's. Yeah, so it was just an FFA-based rodeo. They were only letting kids in, you know, from FFA, no general public or anything. So they had bull riding and bronc riding and all that. So, yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, it was like if you've been to the ghosts in stampede, it was like that. But, you know, obviously bigger scale, so. Yeah, it was a long night, but. It was good.
Did you ride one of the bulls?
I didn't.
Did you stay on for the full nine seconds?
No, we all just got to take a photo.
But we were saying like from the stands, we could do that.
Thank you.
Did the students go into this convention, help them solidify the fact that you've chosen this course for your future as far as education goes? Did it help you in how you feel about what you've chosen for the future?
Definitely.
Yeah.
I'm all the way in Danbury, so like I chose to do this. I'm not driving an hour here for nothing. So I really like to.
So the convention was a positive for you and what you've chosen for the future, at least for now, is the right choice that you've made.
I actually realized that I think I'm gonna, I want to go for state officer at some point. And I think that National Convention really helped me with that. And I think that it broadened my experience with FFA. And I didn't think I was that close to FFA until I went to National Convention.
So I'm thinking, um. Fried pickles. I was just gonna say that could be a great fundraiser for Booth's one day, so.
Congresswoman Johanna Hayes had two of you go with her to meet. Raise your hand, come on, be very proud to meet the Assistant Deputy USDA Dr. Jewell. And she said you guys did a great job. I spoke with her about it. And she said you guys did a great job. And you spent a lot of time with Dr. Jewell. And she really wanted to hear what you had to say. And I want to thank you because that is, that is so great that you did that. And it was, she was just so excited to have you there. So thank you very much for representing us so well.
You're welcome. Anybody else have anything else to say? Absolutely. Thank you so much for coming and presenting. You guys are great.
Thank you so much for your time.
And we look forward to having you back again soon. I am not going to do a board chair report tonight since I did not plan to do one. So that just means.
Yes, okay. So I'm gonna start with personnel. And then I have a few other updates. But we had some appointments. Alan Stinson will be the freshman boys' basketball coach at S V S. And obviously, Alan works here as well. We've had some leave, leaves of absence. Megan Berry, the agri science teacher, who was just here, will be out as of December 15th through February. Betsy O'Neill, special education teacher at S V S in the partnership, will be out. Serena Ribos, who's a sped teacher at Burnham, will also be taking a leave. We've had some retirements, resignations. Celine Marowski, who is a cafeteria worker at Chapag. And then we've also had some transfers. Danielle Boa Ventura is a custodian full-time at Chapag. Kellyanne Shay Corrigan, long-term special ed substitute teacher at Burnham, who was the building sub at Chapag. Andrew St. John, as you know, security custodian at Chapag, is now, has now taken on a new role. We also, as I mentioned, we will have a visit by Mark Gosselin Jr., who's the incoming superintendent, and that's tomorrow. He will be meeting with me, our central office team, principals, and taking a tour of all of our schools throughout the day. So it's exciting. We have students at S V S making lunch from culinary. And he will be ending his day with a tour of the agri science program. So this will help him, I believe, get his first glimpse of this really amazing school district. And so we're looking forward to welcoming him. I am handing you now the annual report. And this comes from Ed Advance. I thought you'd like that. That's our regional education center. And as you know, Ed Advance has been, is and has been so supportive of our district, all the districts in their region, including our own, with respect to supporting us in, through our lunch programs, some specific busing needs we have in special education outplacements, and a wide array of professional development opportunities for our teachers and administrators. So you will also hear about a regional trauma care coordinator that they will need to assign as part of new legislation when I get to my legislative updates later. But the annual report will give you a comprehensive picture of Ed Advance and their work. So that's for you. And finally, we're coming up to Thanksgiving, our Thanksgiving holiday. Our last day for students is next Tuesday. And I just want to take a moment, I know it's come up so quickly, to wish everyone in advance a restful holiday break with families. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Hard to believe. Thank you. Treasurer's report, John?
Yes, I have just something very quickly. Last week, I went down and reviewed the invoices, the checks that were written. Three of the major checks concern the fuel purchases. That's the one-year pre-buy through the consortium C E R C. It's a, it's a part of Ed Advance now. So propane, 45,000 gallons at $2.99 a gallon for a total of 134,955. Diesel, 31,500 gallons at $4.222.25 per gallon. And heating oil, 50,000 gallons at $4.12, almost $4.13 per gallon. So obviously, you know, we all feel it. The prices are up. And hopefully, we'll have a mild winter.
How long should those deliveries last?
They're projected to last about a year. But it depends on usage, I guess. I mean, sometimes the tanks retain excess, so. Hopefully, we won't use a lot. I mean, I got my pre-buy and it's amazing.
Okay. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Does anybody? Yes. Nicole?
Can you hear me? Yeah. To answer Mary's question, so the tank at Chapag is 20,000 gallons. We filled that at the end of last year. So ordinarily, we purchase about 70,000 gallons of heating fuel for Chapag. But because we had already filled it going into the year, which is unusual for us, that's why we backed off some of the usage. So we do plan for the heating fuel to get us through April. But we may have to buy additional heating fuel in the spring because we bought less than we would normally buy just because the prices were so high. Hedging our bets that it would come down in the spring. But both the propane and the diesel should last us the year. It's just the heating we have to watch in the spring.
Thanks, Nicole. Pete?
So we look at prior year usage. And then for, it depends which fuel source you're speaking about. If it's heating fuel that you're speaking about, we try to get our hands on what the overall forecast for the upcoming year is. They start to predict whether it's going to be a hard winter or an easy winter. So we factor that into the purchase of heating oil. With respect to transportation, we look at how many bus runs we're gonna have, how heavy of athletic season we're gonna have. Try to extrapolate out how many bus runs we're gonna have, how much diesel fuel we need for the buses. And then purchase based on that. I can tell you that last year, we came in within 400 gallons of diesel fuel. Based on our calculations, we usually do pretty good on that calculation. And then with regard to propane, we've come up a little short the last two years because it's the first two years we've really introduced propane as heating sources throughout the ag, the new parts of the ag facility. So this year, the 45,000 is based on actual usage last year through the first full year of all of the facilities being used 100%. So I think that 45,000 is gonna be a very close number. But this year will really determine how well we did on that forecast because it's the second full year of full usage of all of the facilities that use propane.
So have you projected we would? How have, how have you projected the budget relevant to where we were last year and where we would be this coming? Have you done any projections?
So we're under, we under-budgeted because of the cost is so much higher. When we projected out the cost last year, you might remember during budget time, that was one of the items that we, there was a lot of discussion back and forth on what the price for fuel, specifically fuel heating oil should be. We ended up budgeting that number at $2.70 a gallon for 70,000 gallons. So we've not purchased 50,000 at $4.12 a gallon. So we are, we are upside down on that budget line, for sure.
No ways really to save money. We're at the mercy of the people who supply us with the fuel, correct?
Correct. And we purchased with what I believe is the biggest educational purchasing consortium in the state. So as a group, that had the most buying power. But we're still at the mercy of the market. And there was a lot of talk during the consortium discussions. There were quite a few meetings about locking the price. And one thing that stood out was that they believe, who they believed at the time, and it has come to fruition, that there is not only going to be the high cost of fuel, but that New England and the Northeast is gonna have a supply issue. So it was, we needed to lock in to make sure we could lock in the supply with a company the size of East River because they could purchase it and store it. A lot of smaller companies who we may have been able to get a little bit better price on couldn't promise the supply.
Interesting. Any other questions? Anyone? Okay. Committee reports? Curriculum?
Nothing new to report since our last meeting. Our next meeting is the 28th at 6:00 PM.
Ed Advance, Joe?
November 3rd, I attended the online Ed Advance Board of Directors meeting. At that meeting, we approved the application for the Connecticut New Indoor Air Quality Reimbursement Program. And they are also going to establish a building committee to, to run that as some of their buildings need to be upgraded. We also approved a carryover grant request for their Head Start and prenatal to five program. We were also presented with a Ed Advance membership dues projection, which we at Chapag pay $1,516 for this current year. And they're projecting a slight increase of $56 for the 2023, 2024 year, which will bring that, those dues to $1,572. That is also based on our enrollment, which is projected to be $7.63 as opposed to $6.88 from this, this past year or this present year. Also, there's a presentation of the special education teacher evaluation data, which half of the teachers were rated as exemplary. And in four years, they have grown their special education staff from six to 30. And it keeps growing. And they have a good outlook on their training and, and their rating system. Also, there's still continuing progress on their acquisition of two Torington properties. One of them is East School. And the other is the Archdiocese of Hartford property on Grove Street. They're hoping to get closing dates by December 1st. But that's pending on inspections and grants, fund grants. And that's all I have for tonight.
Finance and operations, Alex?
Yeah, I don't think we've had a meeting since our last board meeting of the FNO. But the one thing that I want to stress here is that we reviewed the budget timeline. And the budget will have to increase next year. So days of trying to keep it to a small percentage increase or no increase at all, I think, are gone, at least for this coming year. And I think I mentioned that last time, but I don't think you can stress it too, too, too much. So we need to be prepared for the backlash that we're gonna feel when we come out. So we need to be prepared for the backlash that we're going to feel when we come out with our numbers. They're going to be higher.
Thanks, Alex. Yeah?
Is there a major contributing factor to that? Or is it just like a compilation of, uh? I mean, is there a project looming or, or something that, I, I'm sorry, I just, I missed?
Costs are going up, period. I mean, is, is John just told us about the fuel situation? We've always kept a very tight budget. We've never left any, there's not, we never leave evil, we try not to leave a little, that much wiggle room in it. So, uh, you know, if, if we'd put in higher budgets before and returned money to the, to the towns, uh, we, it wouldn't look quite so bad. But, uh, I mean, Nicole, you, you might want to address this further, but, uh, I, I can't give you a number, but it's, it's going to be, it's going to be a bit of a shocker, I think.
So sure, I can speak to that, Stephanie. So, so one of the things that we finished last year that I know Greg had shared with all of you is that we've now negotiated all of our labor contracts. And in all instances, the increases were higher than they have been in the past because of the coming inflation. Since staffing drives about seventy percent of our budget, that in and of itself is going to put a lot of upward pressure on the budget. Two other factors that are really going to drive the budget up. One is the cost of our utilities, electric, propane, fuel, fuel or diesel, whatever that looks like. The other thing that's going to have pressure that we haven't seen in the past is this is the first full year that we're going to pick up the full debt service on the twenty twenty-one bond that we did the Chapag roof, the Chapag oil tanks, and the other improvements that we did Chapag. The debt service will start next year for the first time. So that debt service number alone will put about two percent upward pressure on the budget.
John?
Don't forget salaries and benefits, salary bargaining.
That's good, it's good to know that. It's good to be able to prepare, so.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, so it's, it's always salaries and stuff that John drives it.
Assuming that we would not be the only school district that would be experiencing these increases because it sounds like they're fairly going to be across the board. It seems like that would be one of our strategies is to make sure people were aware that, you know, read the newspaper and see that it's not just Chapag, it's all of our neighboring districts who are in the same boat.
Yeah, it's a universal issue.
Right. So it could be a tough year of selling this, but we won't be alone.
I was also going to add, and you're going to hear it in my legislative updates, that the state will be looking very differently now at the number of support staff, social workers, school psychologists than they have in the past. They're actually going to put together a survey, you're going to have to report to them, and they're going to determine through calculation whether or not each district has what it needs. And I can tell you that will probably impact us, even though we're small, I will tell you that. I'm already sitting just as an outsider coming back. So I think that's going to impact some things as well.
I was just thinking to talking to a lot of people in the community that having a social worker in our district, and it's kind of shocking that we don't have a social worker, especially up at Chapag, but just in general. And I would hope and expect to see that in our budget for this coming year because that is a necessity, not across the line, so that's for sure. Anybody else have any other comments, anything to say?
Julie, Long Beach Planning?
Yes, we met tonight. We were all in attendance, which was nice. And we will be presenting to the full board at the next board meeting to really take a look back at where we were, what we've done and what our path forward is. So we met with Richard Lemons also tonight, who's been the consultant that we've worked with. And we got his input, so we should have a nice presentation at the next meeting. We were going to do it tonight, but Greg wanted to be here for it, so that'll be at the next meeting.
Thanks, Julie. New business, Lori. Back to you.
Okay, so I've already shared with you all the webinar in the past that should have been conducted regarding a litany of legislative updates for school districts to address. So I just shared those same updates with you. I believe you had those in a summary form and wanted to just highlight some of, I'm not going to go through them all because you can read, but just really wanted to highlight what I thought was important this evening. Now, much of this is in play and will be further monitored and addressed by the new superintendent and our administrative staff. But I just wanted you to have a good understanding of what that looks like, especially those important ones. So I'm going to start with sections in Public Act twenty-two forty-seven, which requires DCF in conjunction with the Department of Ed to develop January one, by January one, twenty twenty-three, a peer-to-peer mental health support program. And this would be made accessible to all of the districts, to all the boards of Ed. And the program really is meant to assist students in grade six through twelve. Things like problem solving, decision-making, conflict resolution, and stress management, which is something that I think is, is critically important now more than ever. And it would also include any designated training that our staff may need to guide and support students through that. So that's one thing. Within that same act, different sections, the state is also directing each RESC, our regional ed service centers, and ours, of course, being Ed Advance, for the fiscal years ending June twenty-three and June twenty-four, to hire an individual to serve as a regional trauma coordinator. And that person would be required to work in tandem with all the coordinators. So they would work in conjunction to develop and implement a trauma-informed care training program. And this would be included in the district's training for staff. So when we would come back, staff would be trained and the care coordinators would be a part of that, and that would be part of our program. So there's also a mental health plan for student athletes. Public Act twenty-two eighty-one requires the State Department of Ed by July one, twenty twenty-three. And that's in collaboration with those authorities that govern intramural and interscholastic athletics that we take on a men, or we develop a mental health plan for student athletes to raise awareness of mental health and the resources that go along with that. Again, this is all part, I think, of a wider goal of health and wellness for all of our students. And districts implementing the model plan would also receive that assistance from the state. Then we have the family care coordinators. This is already in place for the twenty-two twenty-three school year as mandated. This is section eight of Public Act twenty-two eighty-one. And this requires each board of Ed to hire or designate, and that's the operative word here, designate, an existing employee to serve as the school district's family care coordinator. So the coordinator would essentially work with social workers, school psychologists and counselors to make sure that students and families have access to mental health resources. This is our own Ellie O'Hara. Poor Ellie, she gets, she takes on so many roles, just given her, her role as the pupil services director. So she would just make sure that we've offered resources to students and families. And that occurs presently. I mean, I think this, this is something we do well, but it would be brought to a more formal level at that point and just making sure everybody has access to that information. You may or may not already be aware of the Children's Mental Health Day from Megan last year. She may have mentioned that because it was talked about. Sections ten and eleven of Public Act twenty-two eighty-one mandates the governor to proclaim May twenty-sixth of each year as get outside and play for Children's Mental Health Day. And this again is, the purpose is to raise awareness of children's mental health and the positive impact that being outdoors has on, on students. The act does require suitable exercises be held in public schools on that day. Or if we're, if we're not in school that day, it could be a day before or something that the board determines is suitable. There is also a new statute addressing the dissemination of opioid antagonists. This is to prevent or to help intervene if someone is overdosing. And this is by staff. When an emergency overdose arises, they're trained by the state, Department of Consumer Protection or the Department of Public Health. So there is training involved in that. This would also require information for districts in terms of proper storage of those medications. And it still allows parents to request students not be given the drug at any time. And they would request that. Excuse me, through the school nurse. Another Public Act twenty-two one-one-six now requires the Connecticut State Board of Ed to develop and distribute by July one, twenty twenty-three, a survey that districts must complete annually regarding the number. Here we go, we just talked about that. The number of school social workers, school psychologists, counselors and nurses, as well as licensed marriage and family therapists that are employed in the district. The act also requires the Commissioner of Education to calculate for it, each district and each school in that district, the student to professional ratio for each of those categories. And again, I don't know what that calculation is, we'll be talking about that. This begins January of twenty twenty-four, but still should be on everyone's radar. And again, I know that the push is to make sure that every district has enough staffing in those very critical areas. There's also a grant program for hiring school support personnel, such as social workers and school psychologists, counselors and nurses. This would be sections four and five of that twenty-two eighty, that act, to administer a program for fiscal years ending twenty, June twenty twenty-three and June twenty twenty-five to provide grants for boards to hire and be able to retain those school support personnel. Also of importance, Sierra for Board of Ed receives a grant for the hiring of a school counselor. Such counselors will be required to provide one-to-one consultation with each student in grades eleven and twelve on the completion of the free application for federal student aid, which is FAFSA. And having worked at the high school my entire career, that is so challenging for parents, so, and students. So that is something that they put in the act, the legislation, so that counselors will have more of a role in that and helping support because families, that's, you know, if you had children going to college, it's for many parents, very challenging. You may be aware of this, Public Act twenty-two one-twenty-eight amends the list of state holidays, which now includes the nineteenth of June, Juneteenth, Independence Day. This may have been brought up last year by Megan. Juneteenth, Juneteenth is a federal holiday commemorating the emancipation of the enslaved African Americans. The General Assembly left intact the provision that schools do not have to officially close, but they should provide suitable activities in honor of that day. Many, many schools do that for Veterans Day, as you know, same thing. And again, this would likely occur only if we ran over, just given the calendar with school, with snow days. So many schools were closed by that date, so, but it could happen. I thought this was important, given our agri-science program. Public Act twenty-two one-twenty-five amends the statute to now require that school counselors provide information regarding vocational, technical, technological and agricultural programs at regional agricultural centers like ours to students and parents. And it also requires that there, this information is published on their website. So that will give, I think, a wider message out to make sure that everyone understands all the options that are out there in the, in the immediate area. Further legislative changes relate to recruitment and retention of staff, including minority candidates. These include a task force that will occur at the state level. They'll need to establish both scholarship programs, minority candidates, as well as looking at teacher retention, which is problematic, to say the least. So that is something the state is taking on. Some other changes, student transportation contracts and zero emission school buses, which I'm sure isn't one of Nicole's favorite subjects. We've talked about Public Act twenty-two twenty-five allows boards of Ed, beginning this past October, to enter into transportation contracts for up to ten years if the contract includes transportation provided by at least one zero emission school bus. The same act requires a transition to zero emission school buses. School buses must be a hundred percent zero emission or alternative fuel, gas, propane by January twenty thirty-five, so we still have time. And I'm sure there'll be changes along the way, but, but a hundred percent zero emission by January twenty forty. So those are the dates, they're way out there because obviously there's a, would be a, a cost when you think about this. But just so you're aware. Public Act twenty-two forty-seven requires that boards include the following additional requirements in their policies and procedures concerning truancy on or before September one, twenty twenty-three. This includes a truancy intervention model developed by the state. And this will include, it, it accounts for mental and behavioral health and a provision of notice to the parents of truancy and the two-one-one infoline program and other mental health, behavioral health screening tools that would be accessible. So all of that is really a push to minimize the truancy that definitely has risen during and post-COVID. And I think that's, well, it's been a long time coming, but that really did kind of push it over the edge. There is also an act, namely twenty-two one-eighteen, that requires boards of Ed, beginning again September twenty twenty-three, to provide free menstrual products in women's restrooms, while gender restrooms and at least one men's restroom. These restrooms mu- must be accessible to students in grade three through twelve in each school. The provision of these products must be done in a way that does not stigmatize any student seeking these products. And this is pursuant to the guidelines of the Commissioner of, of Public Health. With respect to district operations, section two-five-seven of Public Act twenty-two one-eighteen, this begins with the twenty-two twenty-three school year, so the current year, that each para educator employed is able to participate in a program of professional development at no cost to the para. This would be a comprehensive professional development that focuses on increasing their effectiveness in their roles in increasing student knowledge, achievement, focus on refining and improving instructional methods and fostering collective responsibility to, to be able to improve student performance. So really elevating, I think, the needs of the para-professional to be trained in ways that will really help students and support them and, and student learning and growth. Remote learning has been something discussed for high school students last year. As you know, the general, or maybe you don't, but the General Assembly passed a legislation allowing for boards to conduct remote learning for students beginning July twenty twenty-two. And this is only for students in grades nine through twelve. As long as those districts are in compliance with the state's standards for remote learning, and there's a litany of standards, making sure that it's not just, you know, you're sitting home and you're giving them work. It really has to meet the standards as if they were in school and adopt a policy regarding attendance during remote learning. And this is not remote learning, as you know it, related to COVID. This truly is remote learning that they might engage in for a variety of performance activities. And I'm not saying we have that yet, but it is something that has been established, yes. Well, that would, that would be decided by the board and the superintendent. There could be a program that's done that way. Well, that would that would be decided by the board and the superintendent. There could be a program that's done that way. It could also be students that are out. However, it really has to conform and comply and be in compliance with the standards for remote learning and the attendance for remote learning. So and the and the thing it cannot be is dual enrollment, as you saw before during COVID, where the teacher was trying to teach online and at the same time work with students in the class. That is not what it's meant to be. So again, it, every district will be different in the needs that they have and what programs they develop that that might help students, maybe an enrichment or something, but it it has to be, it has to conform and meet the standards put set forth. And I can share those with you. There's a litany of them. They're pretty common sense, but I I can share all that with you. And again, it just depends on what is developed by the district. Oh, this can start immediately. I mean, this started by October. It doesn't have to be implemented. It can be. It can be utilized. That's a very different statement, I think. And other areas in the legislation, I think you can get from the summary that I gave you. You will note some changes in the state's ongoing review of special education needs and funding, namely, the excess cost grant and other related changes, and I think that will definitely come up at some point. God bless you. It will come up at some point, I'm sure, during budget season, as it always does, but I just wanted to highlight some of the bigger areas this evening without taking too much of your time. And that wasn't all of it, but I think the little the little pieces you can read on your own, and and there will, there will be other areas, I think, as the year goes on, especially, for example, the implementation of offering Asian study, Asian Pacific studies and and other studies like that, Latino studies, that can be discussed by, you know, principals as the year goes on, as to how that's going. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
A lot of very interesting ones.
Are the changes usually this much?
We were shocked when we were on the webinar. All I can tell you is people, all the administrators across the street were texting at the same time because it was more than we've seen in a short period of time like this.
I I've never seen that much.
This is why Shipman did its own webinar because it was more than more than usual.
So so obviously, this was in conjunction with the the state legislature, Education Committee, the State Department
At the state level, yes.
And Shipman.
Well, Shipman is the, well, I'm sure they consulted at times, but Shipman was actually just doing the webinar so that you could, districts would understand the nature of those changes and what obligations we had legally in implementation.
Through the state legislature?
Well, that's who passed it.
When did they start this? Last year?
No, 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 these are the state legislature. It's often ongoing where they give you, they change, they make new legislation, they make changes to old legislation. That's common. It just so happened that this, as you said, Mary, and you're right, was just a litany of changes and new legislation that was put forward. So that's why Shipman put together a webinar because they knew this was more than, more than you, you know, most districts haven't seen that so quickly, and and it came to us just this fall. With a lot of timelines that you have to be prepared to make sure we're meeting, which is why I wanted, you know, make sure you heard all of that. It is. It is. You're welcome.
Okay, so we're moving on to action items. Consider, and if appropriate, approve revision to the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four school calendar. This was based off of, we discussed this last meeting, but I guess there was a few changes that we needed to go over.
There are, and and we apologize. Yes, and we apologize because somehow when we made the copies and when we went through it, we missed the which has always been in your calendar, where you've had early release days for profession staff development. So there's one, and she highlighted them, one in September on the twenty-first, one in December on the seventh, and one in January on the twenty-fifth. And we just wanted to make sure that we brought that back, so it was official.
Okay, so we're going to, say, do you want to move, make a motion rather? So move second. Stephanie, second. Anyone opposed? Anyone? Everybody, anyone in favor? Go in favor, abstentions? Moved, done. It has now been accepted. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Consider it appropriate to approve field trip request to the Model UN Conference in Boston, Mass. On January twenty-sixth through the twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, for grades nine through twelve.
This is for the Model UN program, so there are only about twenty-four students and two or three adults attending that. That's a high school program.
Just a question, and I just remembered this from last year. Are there funds? Do they, do do, do they pay for this, the students, or does the school pay? How does this?
I believe in, and probably Nicole can answer this because some districts subsidize it. It just depends.
We subsidize it, and the students do fundraising, and their parents do pay, usually pay a portion of them.
It's, it's a lot. Okay. So I know that was discussion in the past, and and please help me, anybody else remember, we kind of discussed, bless you, marking money for Model UN and the debate club, the same that we would athletics. Right? Do we have earmarked in the budget for, I mean, is that a fair question for me to ask? I don't know. Anyone?
What was your question? Do we have it budgeted?
Well, if it's subsidized, then we do have money in the budget.
We do have money in the budget for part of it.
From my understanding, it's still pretty expensive.
It is.
So, like, very expensive, but six hundred dollars per student? So still have to come up with on their own.
They don't come up with six hundred on their own, no. That's the cost per student, has been in the past. And what we have paid for in the past is, there's a hotel that requires a two-night stay, and then there's transportation. Then there's things like meals while they're there. The district usually subsidizes the hotels and some of the transportation. There's also a
Increase the funds that we, because I'm just, I know it was a conversation that we talked about in the past about allowing us to have money that the same that we do for athletics, for for Model UN and for the debate team, and I just wondered if that was ever
I don't want to misspeak, so I don't remember exactly how much went into the budget for it, but I know that there was funds put into the budget for both of those activities. I just don't know what percent of the activities were actually budgeted. I don't believe it was a hundred percent.
And was, is that yearly the same amount, exactly, or is it new that we've been?
It's the last two years, there's been more budgeted toward those activities. Also, the the other thing that was part of that discussion was the academic banquet versus the athletic banquet. So we've even the the spending out for for that banquet as well.
Thank you. Okay, so do we have a motion?
So moved.
Julie, moved, second. Mary? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone? Abstentions, nothing? Okay, great. Well, that's exciting. They're off to Boston. Very good. They will make us proud. They're pretty amazing. Consider if appropriate, accepting the first read of policy fifty-one twenty, meal charging. That was in our packets. Nicole, you want to talk to us about this?
So this is part of the new legislation that Laurie was just going over, that there's now a federal requirement for boards to adopt a new meal charging policy. And this is relevant to us and needs to be done soon because our smart waiver funds will expire, which is the waiver that allowed us to continue to provide free lunches to all of our students, the program that was started during COVID. Those, that funding is due to run out on December thirty-first. So our families who have traditionally paid out of pocket for school lunch will go back to doing that, and the free and reduced lunches will be provided once again to families who qualify either by application or direct certification. So there's been a lot of push in the federal legislation to make sure that no students are shamed when it comes to lunches for students who can't afford to pay for a lunch. In the past, districts have designated special lunches for those children. Sometimes they included a cheese sandwich or other items that made it very apparent that when they went to purchase lunch, they didn't have funding. So the government really wants to get away from that and take that stigma away from what's happening in school cafeterias. So we need to have a published meal charging policy so that parents understand what that policy is and how many meals are allowed to charge until it requires the school to start to intervene. And the new policy will include intervention at the parent level only instead of at the student level. It also comes in to provide supports for parents and families who do have food insecurities that start to run out balances. So this allows the school cafeteria to perfect, to continue to provide full lunches to these students who may not have funds on their account but may not have otherwise qualified, and allows the school a means to deal directly with the families to provide whatever supports they need to make sure their students' food needs are being met without identifying those children. So this policy is a policy that Shipman has put out as a sample policy that we have worked with at Advance, who is our food service sponsor, to make it work for the way Region Twelve runs its meal programs, and that's the policy that you're being asked to review tonight.
Does anybody have any questions? We have to move it, I guess, first. Do we move it and then discuss? Does it matter? Move it. So can we have a motion? Second? Discussion?
So, starting January first, it's pay-as-you-go. What is the cost? What is the projected cost?
So the cost for breakfast at the middle high school is two twenty-five, and lunch at the middle high school is three seventy-five, and lunch at the elementary schools is three fifty.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor for first reading? Anyone opposed? Okay. Done. So, can I have a motion?
A move that we go into executive session.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned?
No, it's not adjourned.
It's not adjourned until after we come out. Sorry. Thank you, Alex. Get me in a straighten air. Okay. So do I make a motion to move?
First, we have to amend the motion.
So we have to, so I make a motion to amend?
Yes.
Who would like to make the motion to amend? Wouldn't that be?
Don't I have to say what the amendment needs to be?
Just need to include a statement that says that it's limited to twenty days. Here, I'll give you mine.
If appropriate, a motion to authorize
in the in your computer?
Have somebody else make a motion. Okay. Anyone have open computer?
I can do it. I have, I have it. Okay, so the amended motion will say that if appropriate, a motion to authorize Region Twelve to establish a temporary sick bank, limited to twenty days for a certain teaching position, allowing certified staff to contribute up to one day of accumulated sick time to the bank for that particular teacher for whom it was requested.
Thank you. Mary, seconds?
Yeah, second.
Mary, seconds. Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Julie. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Anyone abstained? It has passed. Thank you, everyone. Now, I'd like to make a motion, or I'd like someone to make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
So move.
Well, great. Thanks, everyone.